This is W A T D Political Forum on 95.9 W A T D, online at 95.9watd.com. Now, live from Studio B, here's your moderator, W A T D's Christine James.
Good evening and welcome to a W A T D Political Forum. I'm your moderator Christine James, joined by W A T D reporter Tom Gorman asking questions. The race is for Marshfield Select Board. We have incumbent Lynn Fidler and challenger Trish Simpson both in studio with us tonight. Good evening and thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
And we have over here our own Charlie Fulmer, who's going to be doing the timing. If you see him with these beautiful pieces of construction paper. Green means go. Yellow means you've got 10 seconds and red is stop. If you are still speaking when the red card is up, it means I give you a five-second grace countdown. If you're still speaking, you get the bell. And if you're still speaking after that, we cut the mic. We're pretty tough about timing on this. And of course, we'd like to thank our media partner tonight, Marshfield Community Media, for joining us this evening. Now, our format is simple. We've asked the candidates to have prepared opening and closing statements ready. Opening statement, no longer than two minutes, and a one-minute close, please. Then we have a round of questions from the reporters. The answers are limited to a minute unless I say, "I'll give you another 30 seconds," or we do a follow-up question. Then we go to the lightning round, where the answers are either yes or no, or two sentences tops. And of course, as many people know who listen on a regular basis, this is my favorite part because just about no one running for office can either say yes or no, or stick to two sentences tops. So, this is one reason why we do it. We make people get to the point. So, also, we tell people, please try to keep your answers to around a minute. If you consistently go over, ramble, or start to repeat yourself, then you get the bell. Now, just moments ago, we chose the opening and closing order out of the official stand-in. Very lovely here, newsroom koozie. And we will begin with Trish, and then we'll go to Lynn, and we will switch this order at the end for closing statements. And a reminder, the Marshfield Town election is Saturday, May 3rd. So, good evening. Let's get started, and let's have an opening statement now from Trish Simpson.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Trish Simpson, and I am deeply honored to be a candidate for the Marshfield Select Board. At the core of my campaign lies a simple yet profound belief. Our town thrives when we truly listen to one another and honor our commitments. Marshfield flourishes when the voices of its residents are not only heard, but respected. For too long, many have felt overlooked and dismissed. I'm not here to claim I have all the answers, or that I know you better. I'm here to represent you, to amplify your voices and champion your concerns. It's a responsibility I take with immense pride. As an educator, I inspire my students to embrace challenges and view them as opportunities for growth. That same mindset led me to take a leap of faith and establish Body to Soul Fitness Center, a business that became a rewarding 10-year journey. My dual roles as educator and small business owner have always centered on empowering others to reach their full potential. That's the approach I'll bring to the Select Board, identifying opportunities, fostering growth, and creating a better future for Marshfield. Over the past two months, I've had the privilege of connecting with many of you. I've witnessed firsthand the pride, passion, and potential that define our town. Having lived in Marshfield for over 20 years and raised my children here, I am deeply invested in this community. It's not just where I live, it's my home. Beyond my work as an educator at the University of Massachusetts, Boston, I've dedicated time to volunteering in schools, supporting local charities, and serving on multiple boards at the Manning College of Nursing and Health Sciences. These experiences have reinforced the importance of passion, perseverance, and showing up where I'm needed most. If elected, I will prioritize transparency, fiscal responsibility, and mutual respect across all departments. I believe in fostering positive collaboration and uplifting every corner of our community. Together, we can make Marshfield the very best it can be.
Thank you. That was the opening statement for Trish Simpson. Now, let's go to Lynn Fidler for her opening statement.
Hi, thank you for having me. Lynn Fidler, current Chair of the Select Board. It's been a privilege to serve this town for the past decade, on the zoning board and now on the Select Board for the last three years. I love this town, and everyone needs to know that I always have the best interests of Marshfield at heart. I do not get involved for self-interest or retribution. I did it because I care and have a skill set that is useful to town government. My temperament and judgment qualities have made a difference. We must soften the divisiveness that is prevalent in our town and work towards the world as well, not just in our town. We can continue to prosper and maintain our bond rating. I want to protect our services and build this trust through communication. I can only do this if we work together and collaborate with all our departments. We have town property worth likely over hundreds of millions of dollars. We have $120 million budget. This is a big job, and it is important to have the knowledge and experience to oversee the business of the Select Board. I will always put Marshfield first. I am not a professional politician. I am an independent, and I will vote based on being fiscally conservative. My goals are based on the experience I have gained in the last years working on this Select Board. The plan is to work against bullying and harassment in our town, especially if you work for this town. We cannot be relying on social media for news and must work harder on that communication. Misinformation is hurtful and unproductive. I am the best candidate for this job. We must change the narrative, we must look for solutions, and we must begin now. My conscience dictates who I am, and you can always count on me to use my best judgment.
Thank you. That was Lynn Fidler with her opening statement. Now, we're going to go to questions. Let's start with Tom Gorman, question for the candidates.
What do you feel are the challenges facing Marshfield?
Okay, let's start with Trish.
Some of the challenges facing Marshfield is, I feel like we're in a transition period, having our town administrator step down. So, it's very important that we get someone in there full-time. I know we're lucky to have Peter. I know his background, and he's very knowledgeable. So, transparency is huge. I think trying to get more community involvement, working on the website so people aren't having difficulty navigating the website to find important information. And I think just being an ear for people to be able to voice their opinions and their thoughts and tell us how the vote should go.
Same question, Lynn.
Yes, the biggest challenge undoubtedly is our budget. It's our budget going forward in fiscal year '26, and next year, when we come to town meeting in the spring, going to fiscal year '27. As you know, right now, we're closing out our fiscal year '25. We've got a couple of months left to go, and we need to be at the table working on solutions. We have an interim TA, and Trish is correct. He has a new eye looking at our budget and looking at all the departments and identifying the different folks that he needs to speak with and understand what is going on for our budget. $120 million right now, we need to know what that stands for, for our town.
Okay. I'm going to stick on that same line here. When you talk about with recent budget shortfalls projected and being discussed, how would that be addressed across various departments? How do you decide on that, Lynn?
Sure. I think the first thing that we need to think about is making sure that we are prepared ahead of time, and we have everybody at the table with our Select Board. So, I'd like to include our departments in that process. So, we need to start early, and we need to be prudent in actually asking the right questions. So, that has to be something that we have to do at our Select Board in our agenda. We must have people come in from our departments and share with them their goals and their department needs.
Trish, same question. How would you address those budget shortfalls against, across various departments?
I definitely think the department heads play a crucial role, and I feel like they have not been able to voice what has been going on in their departments. I feel that they've been micromanaged. So, this is an opportunity for them to be empowered and share where they feel the issues lie in their budget, so we can all come together and make decisions that will benefit everybody in town.
Okay. Tom, question for the candidates?
Related question. Should there be better collaboration with the department heads?
Let's start with Trish.
Absolutely. You know, when the first Select Board was convened, one thing I did do when I started studying, I started studying the Massachusetts Select Board Handbook. The Select Board was 12 members that represented the voice of the people, and they couldn't know absolutely everything about everything going on in town, so they decided to have these superintendents of different boards. And what they would do is rely on these people to give them the answers, the needs, the issues that would be going on with the boards, and also address the issues of budgets. And there absolutely needs to be, it's imperative that there's collaboration between the department heads and the Select Board.
Same question, Lynn.
There is collaboration. There absolutely is collaboration. So, we start the process early in the season, back right as we actually finish out our fiscal year and get going on in August. We're working all the time with our department heads. And we also have an advisory board. So, once our Select Board has given the green light to go ahead and put it out there on our town warrants, the advisory board looks at it and goes in and deep dives in all of these departments. Speaks to our police, speaks to our fire, speaks to our schools, speaks to our town administrator. There is that deep dive in all of those departments. And we're going to continue to do that, and we're going to continue to keep on schedule or improve that schedule.
You're listening to a W A T D Political Forum. The race is for a Select Board here in Marshfield. We'll be back right after this.
W A T D's Political Forum continues. Now, back to Studio B, here's your moderator, Christine James.
That's right, I am your moderator Christine James, and I'm joined by Tom Gorman asking questions. The two candidates are here in studio, Lynn Fidler and Trish Simpson, both running for Marshfield Select Board. Lynn is the incumbent, Trish is the challenger. Just were asking a few questions before we went to break. My question is, this comes up a lot in every town. Is it performance or is it politics? How do town officials handle business? Lynn?
Performance or politics? I try to keep politics out of the mix. I think it's on performance, quality of our talented employees, and if we get ourselves bogged down in politics, we can't get to the business of the day. So, you definitely need performance, and we need to hold people accountable for their performance and reward them when they've done a good job. So, talent and giving them the tools is what we need to do.
Trish, what do you think? Is it performance or is it politics, the way the town of Marshfield is run?
The way it has been run, politics, absolutely. But I'm hoping that that will change, and it will be more based on performance.
Okay. Any follow-up questions with that, Tom? Okay. Your next question, then.
Okay, what is your top priority as a Select Board member?
Let's start with Trish.
My top priority is making sure that the people's voices are heard. We've seen over the past year, multiple issues that have been brought forward to the Select Board that has been ignored. We had two town meetings where we voted down the MBTA, and the Select Board went ahead with it. Finally, they did file a lawsuit. And also, we had the big dig where people just wanted the water tested, and the Select Board voted against that. So, I think listening to the people and representing the people, that is the job of the Select Board.
Same question, Lynn?
I'm going to start with the big dig, because the Select Board has no authority over the 40B that Trish is referring to. She needs to do her homework. So, we also need to talk about what happened at town meeting. So, the town meeting as well was about how we go forward with the MBTA. The town voted, 418 people voted to say no to the MBTA. 418 people at town meeting decided that our town would be in noncompliance. We took that, we took it to heart, and we've sued the state. We were the first to sue the state. We're suing them now, and we're working with our legislatures, and we are also working with other towns. So, we are the first to file, and we are going to sue the town.
Oh, you mean the state?
I mean, sue the state. Excuse me, on behalf of the town of Marshfield.
And on that, you know, on that, I know there's a couple of the towns that are also, what they're saying are not in compliance. Now, just to play the devil's advocate here, some critics say, the way the overlay district was set up, it was already in a very heavily developed area, and it would have prevented future development and avoided the cost of a lawsuit. Do you agree or disagree with that, Trish?
Avoided the cost. I mean, it definitely is in a heavy location, but the biggest issue with the MBTA is that, one, it's an unfunded mandate. So, we're expected to take what the state is telling us to do and rezone when also the state is telling us we have the ability to vote when we rezone, but if we don't vote in their favor. So, basically, it's unconstitutional. So, I believe, moving forward, we're taking the correct action.
Okay. What do you think about that, Lynn, about it would have prevented future development because the area is already so heavily developed, could have avoided the cost of a lawsuit? Do you agree with that or disagree?
I think that we are in the lawsuit right now. Whether or not we could have avoided the cost of a lawsuit is up to discussion, and time will tell where our lawsuit heads with this. But we are in the process of losing our discretionary grants, and the actual project itself has nothing to do with affordable housing, which Trish had mentioned, that it's something to do with affordable housing. It's only about multifamily housing. I understood that based on a previous post by her. So, I think that multifamily housing, we have 21% of our town is currently multifamily housing. So, that's where we stand with this town, and we are fighting the state.
I want to give you a chance to respond to that.
I never said anything about affordable housing. I knew it wouldn't address affordable housing because nowhere in there do they have to address the affordable housing, and that's part of the problem. I think the biggest factor, too, that the townspeople stood up against this is the fact that we weren't getting all the questions answered regarding the MBTA from town leadership, and there's a lot of mistrust from the residents.
Do you think that there's a lot of confusion still about what's out there, about whose agenda this is and who isn't? I just know from us, we get, you know, we're surprised that, they're so surprised that the AG and Governor Moore Healy are pushing this, but this was not her legislation. This was Charlie Baker, who had this passed going out of office. And the word affordable is not in the statute, it's just for density. So, in theory, if 15 units, what, per acre? You could have 15--
Over 15, yeah.
Right. Million-dollar condos, and that would be applied to the letter law. So, to me, it seems like people are, a lot of times, talking about apples and oranges, not necessarily you folks, but in general. So, I think there's a lot of misinformation, and I imagine it's got to be, not that I'm on a soapbox, in a town like Marshfield that's already worked to try to get more housing and affordable housing, it's got to be frustrating. You agree with that, Trish?
I absolutely agree, because I know for a fact that people came to me asking my opinion on the MBTA, thinking it was all affordable housing, and I had to explain that that's what it was not. Nowhere in there did it say that. And a lot of people were thinking that we, the town of Marshfield, were afraid of a certain look and a certain population coming into our town, and that's why we voted it down. And I had to assure people that that's not why it was voted down.
Do you think there's still a lot of confusion out there, Lynn, with people, what they think it is and what it is in reality?
Well, the original plan that was put forth with, from our planning department, did include 10% affordable housing. So, that was a way for the town to claw back at that affordable housing. Obviously, that's gone. We're not talking about the action plan. The Select Board voted two to one not to take that up again, and we became in, we were in noncompliance as of that date. So, as far as we move forward with this project, I think it's going to be, it's a non-factor right now. It's not on the table.
Just want to do a follow-up question, too. We asked this question during the state rep races. We say a lot about, talk a lot about affordable housing, but it's really, when they say affordable, it's what's relative to the community. So, when they're talking about affordable, what do you think is affordable housing for Marshfield? What do you think affordable rent would be for a two-bedroom apartment?
Yeah. I mean, certainly, when you're looking at Mill Creek, it's certainly not $3,000 a month. You know, affordable housing has to do with our average median income, and how we get to that point is part of, is part of the state dictates where that number comes and how Marshfield is affected.
Trish, what do you think? What do you think is affordable housing? What would be a number?
A number? I mean, when talking to an individual that needs affordable housing, it wasn't even the rent that was the concern, it was the utilities and paying for water. And that was where she was having difficulty, because she was staying up at Moderna, and she just found that when they tacked on the water charge and then all of the utilities, that's when it was difficult for her. So, I mean, if we're talking just rent, I would say $3,800, but then it's the utilities and the water and everything else.
Okay. It's a tough situation, and I don't think anybody really knows the answer. Tom, questions for the candidates?
Just to follow up on that a little bit, what can Marshfield do to help with affordable housing?
Trish?
Well, I know that there are still areas in town that we have land, and I do know that the downtown area, it is able to have lower-level restaurants and shops and upper-level residential. So, you know, that's one thing that we can do. And there is still other land throughout the town that we can look to, to build on, build affordable housing.
Same question, Lynn?
Yeah. So, the Marshfield Affordable Housing Trust is working on that as we speak. We have a project that's in the mix right now for Habitat for Humanity on Main Street. We're constantly looking and assessing and monitoring the current stock that we have and looking at new options for, we have a goal, we have a plan, and working towards those plans in the future to increase affordable housing.
We talked about that. Of course, ADUs come up. This is an issue in every town with accessory dwelling units. I know that this is one of the issues coming up at your town meeting, I guess on the 28th. So, are you, it seems like every town can set some perimeters. Are you concerned about what accessory dwelling units might do to the look and the feel of the town of Marshfield? Lynn?
I'm concerned about it in some regards, but I think it is outweighed by the importance of having folks be able to have that income generated or allow a loved one to be in a property such as a detached unit. That's what this is. This is allowing an accessory dwelling unit to be detached, be allowed by right, and not have a huge permitting situation. There perhaps could be permitting down the road if you wanted to do something outside the realm, but it's a really important part of increasing housing in Marshfield.
What about you, Trish? What do you think about the accessory dwelling units?
I definitely think it's a necessity with our population aging, and we actually have my in-laws that live right next to us, which is nice because we spend a lot of time with them, but we can be there for when they need us as well. So, I think it's absolutely necessary.
Do you think there should be some restrictions on them?
You know, I don't know. I guess I'd have to see what exactly people are looking to do. I mean, I think it should fit in with zone, it has to follow the rules, you know, just like any other development, that has to follow the rules as far as building, as far as placement off the street. So, if you're able to fit that accessory dwelling on your property, then I think you should be allowed.
What about you, Lynn? Do you think there should be some restrictions on them?
I am concerned about, say, for example, a garage that's three feet from the property boundary, and then having that be part of the mix in accessory dwellings. I'm also concerned about having the parking and things like that in very small lots. They are, they need to be connected to the neighborhoods they're in, but I think that making it an easy project and just a slam dunk for somebody that wants to put one in, that's probably not what they're looking, they're looking at. They're still going to need, they're going to need perhaps engineering, you know, if you have a septic system, you're going to need some guidance there, and there will be some due diligence on the part of the homeowner.
Okay. You're listening to a Political Forum. The race is for the Marshfield Select Board. We'll be back right after this.
W A T D's Political Forum continues. Now, back to Studio B, here's your moderator, Christine James.
That's right, I am your moderator Christine James, assisted by Tom Gorman here at Marshfield Community Media. We've got Lynn Fidler and Trish Simpson in studio. We're talking about what's happening in Marshfield. Lynn's the incumbent, Trish is the challenger for the Select Board. And before we went to the break, we just were talking about a few different issues. Now, we're going to go back to Tom Gorman, question for our candidates.
I just talked about the accessory dwelling unit by law. The state is now not requiring owners to live on the property. Basically, owners can rent out the property. Is that a concern?
Let's start with you, Lynn.
I think it is a concern for a lot of folks because they're concerned that a developer will come in and abuse the property. And I don't really think that that's the case. I think that if you own the property, you're going to be respectful of that property. You can't subdivide it, you can't sell off a unit. It has to be single-family use. So, I think that, I think that it's a good option for folks, and we need to take advantage of this.
Same question, Trish?
I think it would just be like any other rental property, where you'd have to do a background check to make sure any of your renters, you know, were good candidates to live there. So, I don't think it's a concern if the owner doesn't live on the premises.
Question. Of course, part of what we do here is rumor control, and of course, there's always lots of rumors floating around during election time, whether it's with emails sent to us or social media, or comments, or phone calls. So, let's get to the rumor control part. Trish, are you running for this board because you have an ax to grind against the town because your husband's contract did not get renewed as fire chief?
Absolutely not. I think this is a really interesting theory, because I don't understand why I would spend two months of my time putting my heart and soul into this campaign and wanting the best for Marshfield. And I don't understand what I would do once I got in there to grind that ax, as to say. But however, but no, it definitely was a pinnacle moment where I saw a lot of unfairness, and it opened my eyes. And I'm the type of person, when I see things that are wrong, I stand up and say it's wrong, and that's what I'm doing.
Okay. Lynn, we got a question, actually, a couple of people asked about this and wanted to know whether this is accurate or not, about whatever your business relationship is with Bob Galvin. Are you working on the town council? Are you working on any land deals with him?
No, I am not. He is the trustee to my mother's estate, and his father was before him.
Okay. Tom Gorman, questions for the candidates?
How would you improve communication and engagement with the town residents?
Lynn?
We have to continue to try and work harder. We have town tidbits, and that's a way to get factual information out. But I think what we also need to do is get back to the basics and have some sort of a roundtable approach. There's so many talented people in Marshfield that maybe don't have three years to commit to be on an appointed board or on an elected board. But there are so many great topics. For example, sidewalks, the aquifer, town meeting, whether or not we should change it, our charter, all of these things, and the list goes on and on. We need to get people at one table, eye to eye, and come up with some solutions, and then those solutions themselves could be brought together and maybe have a liaison out of that board to the Select Board, and then bring it on to town meeting floor or to the ballot.
Trish, same question.
I already alluded to the fact where I think the website needs to be totally revamped so that people can find information. But one thing that I've been doing is, and I went out today and did a walk and talk with Trish, and it was a chance for people just to walk the beach with me. And last week, it was To My Farm, and they could come and ask questions and talk while getting out and getting some fresh air, and that's something I would love to continue. I think it's very intimidating, too, or at least it was, for people to walk into that town hall and go to the Select Board office. So, this gets the Select Board members out of the office and out and about town. I also went to a gathering last week, and there were about 30 people there, and they said, you know, "Would you be interested in having these group gatherings should you become Select Board?" And I said, "Absolutely." Obviously, it's not something I could do weekly, but it's something that I would definitely consider and try to do on a bimonthly basis.
I just want to continue in that transparency is a word we hear a lot of every single election cycle. Yet, when things happen with key officials in town, little to next to nothing is known, and the rumor mill is always ready to go, and it does, not sure how much can change in that direction because of agreements, legal agreements, personnel. What do you think can change to make transparency something real and not just a concept? Trish?
Well, I think one of the biggest things that, reading in the Massachusetts Select Board Handbook, is that executive session is supposed to be an exception, not the rule. And it seems Marshfield has an executive session every single Select Board meeting. And I think that's not fair to the residents. Again, they should have some knowledge about what's going on. And unless it's a specific personal issue that can't be revealed, I also think that the lawyers have something to do with that, because everybody's afraid to say something. So, I really think we need to get out of executive session, and we should be, people should be able to hear what's going on. people should be able to hear what's going on in the select board meetings.
Lynn, your thoughts on this whole issue of transparency and what could change to make people feel that they've got more of an access to what's happening in town?
I think the executive session protects our town, it protects our employees. As Trish would know, her husband took advantage of our executive session. So I think that when you talk about transparency, you need to talk about the gamut of what that means. So when you are in executive session, you're there to limit the risk of the town, talk about the employees or labor negotiations, potential land purchases and other things. These are things that we do not talk about on the record. And that's the way it is and that's the way it should be. But we have offered a policy of public comment to our town, to our town select board. And that was initiated last year at the request of one of our citizens in our public town meeting. And it was a petition. So I looked at that, took, took a really hard look at it, talked to other members of our select board from previous years in other towns and decided to move forward. So that's an opportunity to create transparency.
Okay, Trish, you wanted, you want to respond to that? She did mention your husband.
My husband was not in executive session. The select board chose to do a public, a public meeting where his contract was not renewed in front of reporters and Marshfield Community TV. And so they did not give him that courtesy, that same courtesy that was given to Michael Maresco.
That is incorrect.
You want to, okay, give you a minute here, that's all right, Lynn, you want a minute?
Her husband was definitely in executive session with his attorney.
Let her finish.
Excuse me? With his attorney.
Let her finish, okay, so you've got-
Prior to him not receiving a new contract, he was in executive session.
Hey, Trish, you wanted the minute?
Okay, he, he wasn't in executive session, which I told him it should have all been out in the public. And, but that had nothing to do with his contract. And when it came to time, time for his contract negotiation, they did not give him the courtesy of saying, let's have an executive session, we'd like to go another way. They did it in front of the cameras so that everybody can hear it. And it just was, it just, I thought it was very unprofessional.
Now, if you could, if we lived in a perfect town and you could have, regardless of what the rules are, how do you think it should have been handled, the situation?
For whatever reason, they didn't want to renew Jeff's contract and that's fine and that's their choice because they're the select board. But they should have pulled him into executive session and said, we're going another way. Instead, they did it in public and then when he asked if he could speak, he was told he could not speak.
Do you, Lynn, do you think that there's a, regardless of what happened, do you think that there, and if regardless of any rules or regulations, do you think that there might be a better way to handle situations like this, what your thoughts are?
I wished and hoped that Jeff had come prior to that select board meeting, it was on the agenda. He did not come to see me. He didn't request for renewal of his contract. I was hoping he had. I wanted to know, I wanted to see him eye to eye and, and know that his heart was in it. He did not choose to do that.
Okay.
He chose to tell Michael Maresco. He told your boss, or, I'm sorry, it was your boss.
Michael Maresco was not my boss.
Yes, he was.
Okay, did, all right, 30 seconds uninterrupted, Trish?
No, no, he, she chose to listen to one side of the story, plain and simple. And you know what? Once again, I'm moving forward, but what they did was wrong and very disrespectful. And moving forward, I hope to be the type of town, a, a select board member that respects our residents, our town workers and, and would never put someone in this position because it was very hurtful after 33 years on the fire department.
Lynn, she said, Michael Maresco, your boss, do you want to respond to that?
Michael Maresco is the town administrator and the town administrator works at the pleasure of the select board and helps with the day-to-day operations.
Okay. Let me go, let me just, in the same vein, would you say your management style is more autocratic or collaborative? And if collaborative, please tell me some examples of who you've spoken to in this election cycle to get their perspective or input, Lynn?
Yes, collaborative. I have spoken to the fire chief, I have spoken to the police chief, I have spoken to the council on aging, I have spoken to the department heads in regards to other options that they are, they are working out. I am in contact with the school committee. I am in contact with our superintendent of the Board of Public Works and I continue to keep those lines of communication open.
Okay, would you say you're more autocratic, Trish, or collaborative and who have you spoken to?
Definitely collaborative. I've met with the fire union, the police union, DPW. I've met, I will be going to the Marshfield Commercial Fishermen's Meeting this Thursday and definitely collaborative. I, I enjoy empowering people, bringing the best out of them and allowing them to do the jobs that we hired them to do.
Okay. Tom Gorman, questions for our candidates here?
Do you think Marshfield should move to a town council, mayor form of government like Brantley Waymoth did some years ago?
Trish?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that one more time?
Should Marshfield move to a town council, mayor form of government like Waymoth and Brantley did?
No, I don't, I don't think the residents of Marshfield would like that. I think they want to be the voice, town meeting is supposed to be the voice and hopefully it will be again.
Okay, same question, Lynn?
I wouldn't say town, town meeting is the voice. I think town meeting needs to be improved and if we can improve that, we need to do so. I think that the actual, the way we are working right now could potentially need another two select board, it could be a five-member select board. I used to think quality over quantity, but based on the situation that I'm in, I've been in this year, I think that having the ability to talk to another select board member could be useful.
Okay, you're listening to a WATD Political Forum, it's the Race for Marshfield Select Board. We have Lynn Fidler and Trish Simpson here in studio, of course, joined by Marshfield Community Media. We're going to take a quick break, come back right after this.
WATD's Political Forum continues. Now, back to Studio B, here's your moderator, Christine James.
That's right, we are back here in Studio B, the Race for Marshfield Select Board. We've got the incumbent Lynn Fidler, we have the challenger, Trish Simpson. Right before the break, I was asking the last question, so Tom Gorman, questions for the candidates?
What experiences do you have that best prepares you to serve the town?
Well, let's start with Trish.
I think the fact that I am an educator and I've worked with a variety of different people and populations and I'm a great listener, I think is huge. I think having run my own business and started, starting my own business shows that I have initiative and drive to learn things and to try new things and I'm not afraid of a challenge. So I think I bring that. And I think what's most important, as a wise man told me, that it's not about experience, it's about what's in your heart and your head and what you do with it.
Same question, Lynn?
Yes, experience, I have it. I've been in it, I've been doing the work of a select board member for three years. I'm ready, I'm up to the challenge, I understand what's, what we need to do. We need to work on the budget, we need to work on keeping people involved, we need to have open communication, we need to include new important topics on our select board agenda. But I'm also honest with the public. I represent their interests at all, at all costs, even when those decisions are not popular. I listen and advocate for improvement where necessary and I hold folks accountable. And I need to work on solid working relationships with everyone.
The town of Plymouth recently went through an issue trying to opt out of part of the state gun safety law that lets firearms in town-owned buildings and parks. Do you support something like this in Marshfield? Lynn?
I do, we own John Foster Lumber in town and we allow, we have a sticker on the, on the window when you come in, so it identifies that you can come onto our property with, with the proper licensing. And that is something that, that we, we have done recently. But I, I do feel that it's important that everybody has that right.
Okay, Trish, how do you feel about that?
I honestly don't have enough information, it's something I would need to look into.
Okay. Tom Gorman, questions for the candidates?
How should Marshfield approach decisions related to finances?
Trish?
Again, I think they need to, if it has to do with departments, bring in the department heads and have discussions, but also to make sure that it's in the best interest for our residents, for, for every resident and not just a select few.
The decisions to finances, that has to start with having a very strong finance team. And we are working to develop a very strong finance team. As you know, our treasurer was not renewed her contract. So we have Sean Strobel working through and, and coming up to, coming up to the mark as far as getting our budget together and he'll be working with our interim as well. And we have an accountant, so we, we're using Munis now, we came from Softrite, so we have a lot going on, but that gives us the ability to keep, keep our departments in the loop and have them be able to do their purchase orders and their invoicing and everything and, and, and keep that process going. So the financing decisions will come ultimately through the select board, but with the background that everybody needs to have following up.
Economic development gets mentioned a lot with every single race we cover, whether for state reps, state senate, local towns. Your plan or ideas for Marshfield when we talk about economic development? Lynn?
Yes, so as you know, economic development is what we need in this town. It serves our town, it gives us the ability to have restaurants, it gives us the ability to have all sorts of services that we rely on in such a town with 26,000 folks, 47 in the summer. So we need to continue to work on that. We are at the state house right now working on new liquor licenses, three new and three poor through, and that, that didn't make it out of the last, the last year's planning with the state and so we're working on that now. But we need to encourage economic development and our Chamber of Commerce does a fabulous job doing so.
Trish?
I, I agree, I think we need to work on economic development in Marshfield. However, it should be done in a responsible manner and again, it should be according to zoning and conservation. So it's something that we definitely need, but again, everybody needs to follow the rules.
What do you think their qualities and characteristics are that the next town administrator should have? Trish?
The next town administrator, it should work as an advisor. They need to be strong on the budget. They need to be able to be a quick study on the needs of the town. And they also need to make sure that they work collaborative, collaboratively with the select board. There should be a give and take and it should be comfortable, it shouldn't be awkward and it should be a partnership.
Sounds like the birds out there are enjoying this conversation. Lynn, what do you think? What do you think the qualities and characteristics of the next town administrator should be?
I think we have a lot of boxes to check. We need to have, we need to make sure that we have a lot of the characteristics that our previous town administrator had and then build from what our interim town administrator is identifying as well. So we need to definitely have somebody that's very strong in their ability to have a peace of mind dealing with their employees, a respect back and forth and people need to be able to go and talk to that, talk to that person. And the policies need to be enforced. And we also need to have the, there are different options that are available to governments as far as finance and we need to investigate what things we can do better in finance.
Let me give you a quick follow-up question. Should the next town administrator be a Marshfield resident or not, or does it matter?
I don't think that's necessary. I think that if the quality of that, that individual is, checks all those boxes, I don't think they, that that's part of what I would see as the most important thing.
Trish, what do you think? Should the next one be? No, okay, not a resident?
I don't think they should, I think you lose your objectivity.
Okay, Tom Gorman, questions for the candidates?
We were talking about earlier about town meetings, is there any way the town meeting can be improved, do you think?
Trish?
Obviously, so that we can get more people there and I think we need to put some surveys out. I don't know if people are looking for a weekend as opposed to a night. I know they run late and I get up at 4:30 in the morning, so to, to be there at 10 o'clock at night, it's, it's hard to then wake up. So I think we should run some surveys and find out what people, what would help people get there. Absolutely.
Same question, Lynn?
Yeah, I think there are some options available Saturday. I know some towns do use Saturday, but as you know, our town meetings have run multiple days. But I also am wondering about taking advantage of the ballot and using a ballot as an option to get more people out to vote and, and limit maybe the amount of items on our town meeting. But as I said, town meeting can't be, can't be a crazy town. It has to be, has to be respectful. We've been at it, 1640, Marshfield started this, we were one of the first towns to have town meeting. And it's, it's a really cool process, it's a democratic process. But we need to keep people engaged and sitting through town meeting is, is, for a lot of residents, pretty painful.
I want to ask you a quick question, so I think we're going to go to our lightning round because we're actually coming to the end of this hour, which I know you both enjoyed very much.
Yes, it was so much fun.
There you go. Let's start with, with what do you think, and this kind of ties back into something Tom asked in the beginning, in two sentences, what is the biggest issue or challenge you're going to be walking into in this office for the next term, in two sentences? Lynn?
Identifying a town administrator and identifying some solutions for our budget moving forward.
Trish, two sentences.
Making sure people are doing their job.
Okay. Lightning, okay. What social media sites do you frequent? Trish, two sentences.
Facebook, now I'm on TikTok. I created TikTok with this campaign, but mostly Facebook.
Okay, what social media sites you on, Lynn?
I like Facebook Marketplace and I like all the, the little Instagram things that my children post.
Now, would you say, and be truthful here, would you say you've watched less than 10 minutes of or more than 10 minutes of the first Karen Reed trial?
Less than 10 minutes.
Okay, Lynn?
Are we talking current trial?
No, the, the first one.
More.
Okay. What's your favorite spot in Marshfield?
Well, I, I love the beaches, but I'd have to say Dairy Queen.
That's a good one.
That's original. Lynn, what's your, what's your, what's your favorite spot in Marshfield?
The backyard of my mother's house in the fields, yes.
In the last 10 years, name the two most effective town officials in Marshfield. Trish?
No comment.
Okay, two most effective town officials in the last 10 years in Marshfield?
Definitely Phil Tavoris and I would say Jim Fitzgerald.
Okay, and then, because I can't help myself, Plymouth County Government, stay or go? Lynn?
Stay.
Okay, Trish?
I don't know enough about it.
Okay, let's go, and let's see, let's go to our closing statements now. We're going to close the order, we began with Trish and then we went with Lynn, so now we reverse the order. We're going to close, these are only one minute, not two minutes, so we're going to begin with Lynn and then go to Trish. Lynn Fidler, your closing statement?
Sure, very quickly, vote for Lynn Fidler. I'mwithlynn.com and marshfieldfirst@gmail. I have demonstrated that I am worthy of the residents' trust in the years that I've served this town. What you see is what you get. I don't mince my words, my decisions are based on factual information, my convictions in the best interests of Marshfield. I have the determination to serve and another three years for the, for serving the people of the, of Marshfield. I'm not in this for any single agenda or grudge. I have proven my commitment to Marshfield. This town is awesome, I love this town. Ask for your vote on May 3rd. I'm the chair of the select board and I, I am pleased to offer another three years to the town of Marshfield. Thank you to the residents and all my supporters, I could not do this without you.
Thank you, that was a closing statement for Lynn Fidler. Now we're going to go to Trish Simpson, your closing statement.
I'd like to thank WATD, Marshfield Community TV, Christine James, Tom Gorman and Charlamagne for providing this platform. I am running to be the voice of change and the voice of the people. When the first select board convened in Dorchester- the people. When the first select board convened in Dorchester in the 1600s, and later in Marshfield after its incorporation in 1640, members were chosen by their peers because they were trusted to represent the community. My goal is to uphold that tradition by earning the trust and respect of Marshfield residents and ensuring their voices are heard. I have a deep and enduring connection with this community, with countless friends and family who call Marshfield home. I am committed to fostering responsible growth, governing with the voices of our citizens at the forefront, and encouraging open, honest discussions about our town's future. Together, we can build a stronger, more inclusive Marshfield. My name is Trish Simpson, and I invite you to join me at town meeting at Marshfield High School next Monday. And I would be honored to earn your vote Saturday, May 3rd.
Thank you very much. That was the closing statement of Trish Simpson. You've been listening to a WATD Political Forum, of course, with Marshfield Community Media. And I'm Christine James, your moderator. Tom Gorman asking questions. Charlie Fulmer timing us, timing us our own Larry Nelson in there, engineering. This forum will be up on our website tomorrow. You'll hear selected cuts tomorrow during Morning Drive News. And you can go to our website a little bit later on tomorrow and keep listening to the whole thing. And I know Marshfield Community Media has a whole schedule that it's going to be put out on. May 3rd is the Marshfield Town Election. Of course, we will bring you complete results as soon as they're in. Remember, get out and vote. If you don't vote, you don't have a voice. I'm Christine James, 959 WATD. Thanks for listening.